We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order. Stand with the pledge allegiance, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Items, three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we add. Pages eight through D. Proclamation, years of service, resolution sixteen sixteen reaffirming the roles and responsibilities under administrator control. Government employment agreement precarry heaping, resolution sixteen nineteen ratifying collective bargaining agreement with district court employees, estimated fifteen eighteen.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Items five, the minutes of previous meetings, A through C.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and file the minutes of the April twenty first commission meeting, the May fifth special meeting, and the May fifth standing committee meetings.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamations.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I would move to approve proclamation recognizing years of service.
Support. Okay, we are going to actually read this.
Everybody gets a paragraph, whether it's a short one or a long one. I'm starting with you.
This is a proclamation for Bill Kaufman, years of service, whereas after more than thirty-two years of public service in our community, Bill Kaufman, St. Clair County's administrator comptroller, has reached a point where he has decided it's time for a change, retirement, and?
Whereas Bill served his country for four years in the United States Air Force before receiving his master's degree in planning from the Northern Michigan University, and?
Whereas in nineteen eighty-four, Bill joined the city of St. Clair as assistant city manager. He began his career with St. Clair County in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety as a planner three. He was subsequently promoted several times, planning director in two thousand and three, interim administrator comptroller in two thousand and eleven, and administrator comptroller in June of two thousand and eleven, and?
Whereas during his time in the planning commission, Bill spearheaded several initiatives. In two thousand, he completed a comprehensive revision of the county master plan that ultimately earned an outstanding planning award by the Michigan Society of Planning. He oversaw the county's first full-scale facilities master plan in two thousand and six. Additionally, he implemented several innovative programs, including the concept of the Parks and Rec Village and distribution to local communities, and establishment of the Brownfield redevelopment and land bank authorities, and?
Whereas Bill has championed economic development efforts throughout St. Clair County during his tenure as administrator comptroller. Through his ability to establish and enhance collaboration among community and private partners, the county has achieved several notable accomplishments. Several key developments under Bill's leadership include the construction of the convention center on budget, enhancements to the international airport, increasing corporate air traffic and accommodating larger aircraft, and stabilization and enhancement at the landfill capitalizing on the bioreactor, and?
Okay, thank you.
Whereas, in addition to his service to the county, Bill has generously served the community in a personal capacity. He has volunteered for many years at the soup kitchen. He has also been involved in various capacities with Habitat for Humanities, Pilgrim Lutheran Church, and the Masonic Lodge in St. Clair County, and?
Whereas, once retired, Bill will be in or on any river that holds fish[323.66][323.66](laughing) and any wilderness with space to pitch a tent. When and if he comes in from the outdoors, his list of honeydew items awaits. Bill and his wife Kathleen look forward to celebrating their twenty-fifth wedding anniversary in June. They plan to travel, see their daughters much more often, and enjoy life to the fullest without the Board of Commissioners tagging along.
Oh.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners does hereby adopt this proclamation extending our deep appreciation to Bill Kaufman for his more than twenty-six years of dedication to St. Clair County and devotion to the community. We join your family in congratulating you on your retirement and the many, many joys of life to come. Proclaim this nineteenth day of May, two thousand and sixteen, Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we are going to move on. I'm sure he can make some comments later. Consent agenda, items seven, A through F.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items A, seven A through seven F on the consent agenda.
Support. Discussion on any of these. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item number eight, reports of standing and special committees. I'm going to start with Commissioner Greitop.
I'm going to take a pass today, thank you.
I have none.
Nothing.
Greg?
You know, tomorrow morning's emergency management breakfast, we never talked about it earlier, but emergency management had a joint effort with the Canadian medical and first responders, and I think it was earlier this month, it was a three-day event that seemed to be very enlightening when you talk to the people that were putting it on. And it seems like it's a great affiliation to have, to know if there's a problem there, we can help them. If there's a problem here and we need extra help, they can help us. So they've done a lot with radio communication and manpower, so pretty interesting. I don't know if at the breakfast they'll be talking about it at all, but pretty neat to see.
Okay, very good. Carl?
The only thing I would add from the committees that I serve on is that the next Michigan Development Corporation, the I-69 corridor, they have representatives, including this year, Dan Casey from the St. Clair County EDA, that will be going to Washington to meet with all the states that are along the I-69 corridor from Canada all the way to Mexico. And they've developed a coalition of representatives from our state, and these include not only the counties that are in the corridor that go St. Clair, Lapeer, Genesee, and Chihuahua, but also through Lansing and down through Calhoun County. Everybody is pushing an agenda to complete the corridor, and the top project on that agenda is the completion of the Blue Water Bridge. And recently, as everybody knows, we have submitted letters of support for a five million dollar tiger grant from the Michigan Department of Transportation. So there's a lot of excitement growing around the corridor, and it looks like there's going to be quite a bit of activity taking place. One of the speakers that we had at our last meeting was from MDOT, and he reviewed what we saw in the newspaper this week about how St. Clair County and Lapeer County are going to be the site of new autonomous automobiles and trucks, and this is going to be one of the first areas in the whole country where those kinds of vehicles are going to be tested. And they're working with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation with a goal of trying to brand this area as similar to Silicon Valley, which isn't really a place, but it's a brand. And we want to make Michigan the autonomous car brand for the whole country.
Excellent. Nothing to report at this time.
Just to echo some of Carl talked about, I know a handful of us attended a luncheon when we had Jay Johnson, the Homeland Security Director in town, along with the Customs Board of Patrol, Gil, I can't even pronounce his last name. But what we do know is, when you go to the thirty thousand mile level, I guess, that there's two major ports, Halifax and somewhere else in Virginia. They have these new supertankers for cargo ships, for long and short of it. Halifax has signed some major trading agreements with these outfits to be able to get these goods in. So the state of Michigan, because, you know, we went through these meetings, and, you know, we talked a lot about it, you know, here in the county, where do we fit into the larger scheme of things? And, you know, essentially, there's going to be a lot more goods that are going to be coming into Halifax that are going to be offloaded via rail or via truck. So, I mean, they know that the amount of goods that are going to be coming through this crossing in Detroit are going to be substantially more. So, you know, right now, we have some hard times sometimes processing goods, those types of things. And really, what it does is it affects commerce at a much larger level. Your goods that are pushed to Chicago, your goods that are pushed to St. Louis, so on and so forth. So they know our issues, we know our issues, and we talk about why would they be putting in, I'll use these Love's Truck Stops as a great example. I've had conversation recently, St. Clair Township putting one in out there, K-PAC. They know that there's going to be a whole lot more truck traffic that's going to be coming through our community, bottom line. So like anything, it's positioning and, you know, those things that are going to happen. So it just reinforces fits into the whole things that are happening here, and we're going to, you know, essentially be on the receiving end, so.
You know, right here in St. Clair County, we have two U.S. freeways, we have an international bridge, and we have the new rail tunnel. And so all of this commerce that should be coming from Halifax and being distributed across our country, there's a good chance that a lot of it would come through here. That provides us some advantages in terms of locating different industries, and the reverse is true, too. A lot of the products that are being manufactured here are going to be shipped out through those supertankers, those are the most seen at Halifax port. So I know, I wasn't on the commission at the time, but I know when there was talk first of the I-69 corridor, people kind of held it disdain and didn't believe that anything was about to take place, but the state was moving very strategically to help get us aligned to take advantage of this change in, you know, international business.
Okay, Howard?
I really took a pass, thank you.
Okay.
Other than a comment I heard that whenever Secretary, Homeland Secretary Johnson sees Senator Peters, it's, yes, I know Senator Port Huron. So we definitely made an impression on his visit out here, and hopefully they'll find the thoughts.
Okay. Going to go into citizens wishing to address the board. I have one, John Heintzwith, one, Heintzva, okay. One eight nine nine, Drabridge Court, Marysville, Michigan, Kaufman Retirement. Go right up to the, yeah, you get a little TV time there.
You have three minutes.
We might even let you go a little longer if you say nice things about him.
That's true.
It's three minutes when people are yelling at us.
Chairman Bone and Commissioners. I wanted to address the Board of Commissioners regarding the retirement of Bill Kaufman as administrator. I'm Bill's pastor at Pilgrim, and I have been, in church terminology, blessed by Bill's involvement and support in our ministry at Pilgrim. And I also wanted to assure you that I'm not attending his last meeting as administrator to offer you, as a board, the opportunity for public confession and absolution. That's a separation of church and state, but I want to think about that later.
Your church is in St. Clair, is that correct?
Pardon?
Your church is in St. Clair?
Marysville.
Marysville.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marysville. Yeah, I, oh, I'm on, I serve on the Commission on Aging in the county as well. I'm sorry, I should have, I was going to read all that to you. I'm in District Four.
Yes.
The Greek word for administration is kubernasis. It's only used, that word is only used once in scripture, which could say something about why the church runs the way it does. That's supposed to be humorous for all of you.[977.31][977.31](laughing) The word means to guide, okay? It carries the idea, someone who guides and directs a group of people toward a goal or a destination. I'm here to recognize and commend to you, the board, how I believe Bill has faithfully and compassionately used his gifts to direct and guide county government for the good of all its citizens. Related to that word is another word that's only used a couple times, and that word means shipmaster of all things, or a captain, and the literal meaning of that word is to steer. I think that's quite appropriate when I think about the picture in my mind in the vista from the international deck at the convention center, and how Bill was so instrumental in making sure that that deck was constructed so that people would be steered to Port Huron and to St. Clair County. In the New Testament, like I said, this is going to sound like a sermon, in three of the four Gospels, when Jesus calls the disciples who were all commercial, a number of them are commercial fishermen, he said, well, now I'm going to have you fish for people. I'm going to have you catch people. Well, one way Bill's facing the flip side of that coin, that call, that vocation, he's now going to be able to focus solely on fishing for fish. I'm not going to speculate on nor predict his success with the catching part of that call, however, that's up to him and the fish. Bill's direction and guidance and professionalism in our community as county administrator will be missed by many, including all of you. However, Bill's retirement will, I believe, also provide him with new, different, and alternative opportunities to use his gifts and abilities to guide, direct, and steer others in service to our community and in the future, so that way we can continue to fish as well as catch people, people for the good of our community. So to quote Jesus one more time, "Bill, well done, good and faithful servant."[1113.65][1113.65](applause)
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Seeing now new business, approval of county disbursements for April sixteen?
This time I'd like to move to approve the county disbursements for April two thousand and sixteen in the amount of thirty-one million, four hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
Report. Scottson. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. You know, before, I should have actually done this before we started the new business. I've got a few people in attendance from Chemical Bank here this evening that wanted to say a couple words, I guess, just a little introduction and stuff, and you want to take the time to jump up there and do it, get yourself a little TV time.
My name's Jennifer Melnike. I work with Talmer Bank and Trust right up the street, and this is Jennifer West from Chemical Bank. We had the great opportunity of being able to be in the position of merging with Chemical Bank and have the opportunity to bring in Jennifer and her team to have a more robust plan for the county to present for the four fifty-seven plan. Currently, right now, we're working with John Hancock, and then Watkins Ross is the TPA record provider, and we're able to partner with Chemical, now with the merger, to offer all of those services done now in-house with Chemical. Tell me a little bit about that.
Sure. So a couple months ago, we provided a proposal to Bill and his team, just outlining the benefits of Chemical Bank and how it would benefit the county. There's a significant cost savings, as well as the opportunity to work with Chemical Bank and have everything done in-house. So we will take on as trustee of the plan, which takes some liability away, and that's probably the primary benefits to the plan. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, no, I know they, obviously, you guys manage a lot of the county's assets and things over there, and, you know, from when it went from Citizens to Talmer, the transition was moving on, I'm assuming it's going to be, you know, likewise, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have had the unique opportunity to work closely with Chemical Bank. I was city manager in Midland for fourteen years, and they were a great community partner, so we look forward to working with you here as well.
Thank you.
I got a really dumb question for us. Chemical Bank from the northern part originally, is that where it originated? Because I went to central Michigan in eighty-six, I never saw a Chemical Bank, and we had-
I'm a CMU grad, too.
Okay, like you already, heart of the north.
Chemical Bank is headquartered in Midland.
Yeah, okay, interesting.
And with the Talmer merger, we will be the largest Michigan-based bank.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we're going to jump into the two thousand and fifteen airport annual report.
Misses, I'd please tonight to bring, to be here tonight to bring you the two thousand and fifteen annual report for the airport. If you'd like to follow along in the booklet that Jenny created for you, it's on page four for the financial report. Here you find the five, the last five years' history of revenues, expenditures, our operating gain and loss for, basically, this is all airport revenues and expenses, everything including the new FBO services, everything that you see there. For two thousand and thirteen, Commissioner Greitop, you just asked me, when we went into the FBO business in the middle of two thousand and thirteen, so we haven't included, that's basically just the half of the year. So for two thousand and fourteen, you can see that you allocated us the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. For two thousand and fifteen, you allocated us two hun, the airport, sorry, two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So you can see we are, we are making progress.
Good, thank you.
I could ask you, do you have an estimated forecast for two thousand and sixteen now?
We, I can, okay. So ground leases, I just kind of wanted to point out to you real quickly, this is our revenue from all the ground leases, the private hangars and the industrial park, again, for the last five years. FBO aviation services, again, we really haven't, we haven't really included two thousand and thirteen because there was so much transition to that, and so basically, this is your income expenses for your first full year of two thousand and fifteen, and then your second full year of, as I continuously say, we are now in the FBO business, of the revenue and expenses and operating gain and loss. You can see that we are up by forty thousand dollars for two thousand and fifteen. So again, we are on an increase. And along with that, we have, you know, obviously increased our professional services. We've, we're updated to the industry standard, we have competitive fuel prices now, your local tenants are now purchasing fuel at their home base, the FBO services that were required, that were in our request for proposal are now being met. Community benefit assessment, I brought this to you last year, and I want to bring it out again. I want to point out that the, this is reported by the state of Michigan, by the Office of Aeronautics, that the local economic impact to this, to the airport does to the county of St. Clair is sixty million dollars. That's substantial. Again, the grants, again, I wanted to point out that this is my tenth year as airport director, and in my tenure, we have received just over two-point million, two-point, two-point one million dollars in federal and in state grant monies. This board has approved one hundred and ninety-five thousand of that in the last five years for their local share. So I'd like to thank you for the support and infrastructure for the airport. Just a little update on the implantments, you can see that we're basically staying consistent with the implantments. Around two years ago, I had asked that, this is reported by the state of Michigan, and it's by flight plans and that kind of thing, so I had asked about two years ago if we could actually have the actual counters for the airport. They were installed this spring, so for two thousand and sixteen, we'll have a much more accurate count for our implantments. So that'll work out real well for us. Based aircraft, again, we're staying pretty consistent with that. Fuel gallons sold, again, we're staying a little consistent with that. We're up nine thousand gallons than we were from two thousand and fourteen, a little more than two thousand and twelve, so we're kind of staying pretty consistent with that, too, moving forward. So two thousand and fifteen in review, marketing will always be a consistent, ongoing marketing for the airport. We've created a brochure that has went to every corporate aircraft that's landed at the airport within the last five years. It's either been emailed or mailed to them to provide them with our new services so that they knew that we are providing a new service now. Aviation mechanic, we've had a change in need for that, so we will be, we will be creating an RFP for that. Slogan contest, we wanted to find something that basically set us aside from other Michigan airports, so we had a slogan contest with seventy-four entries, which was pretty fun. And Aeronautics Board and Friends of Airport have picked "Blue Waters, Blue Skies" as our slogan for the airport. So it kind of, kind of goes with everything with the Blue Water Convention Center. So we'll be using that on all of our slogan, all of our materials, that slogan on all of our marketing materials in the future. Michigan Airport Managers Conference, I have successfully been accepted to host the Airport Managers Conference in September of two thousand and sixteen in your new Blue Water Convention Center, so that'll be pretty exciting. De-icing, skip forward, sorry. De-icing, we're still working with a DQ on getting the, giving the permission for them to allow us to do, use the de-icing procedure on the airport because of the stormwater prevention plan. We'll continue working on that. Corporate hangar improvements, July of two thousand and sixteen, the corporate hangar ramp will be completely rehabilitated, and then we'll continue again to address the maintenance needs as they come along to try to market, to fully market that also. Let's see, let's skip again. For the airport business plan, for two thousand and sixteen initiatives, it's time now that we're to the point where we've invested what you have, and we're slowly moving forward, that we do come up with an airport business plan. So we're going to start working on that in two thousand and sixteen. Basically, number three goals with that would be is how do we generate more revenue? How do we reduce our expenses? And how do we secure more capital funding? So that would be an ongoing goal for myself. Sixty-fifth anniversary is October of two thousand and sixteen for the airport, so we're going to celebrate that along with Airport Appreciation Day in September this year, which will be pretty exciting. Flight School Training Center, we have developed a request for proposal for a flight, a full-time flight training center, been approved by the Office of Aeronautics and approved by Corporation Council. It'll be posted yet this week, and what plan is to use a yellow flight training building next to the EOC for that. Air industrial park ground leases, we've been talking with Commissioner Tompkins, the industrial park leases are almost thirty years old, there is, within the next three years, all of them will have expired, the thirty-year-old leases. I've been working with the FAA, Corporate Council, EDA, and the Office of Aeronautics to get them up to speed that they should be. We had a new appraisal rate done for fair market value of what the ground lease would be in the- be in the industrial park, which is, at the current time is 11 cents, and it came back that that is a fair marketable rate, so we'll continue to keep it at the 11 cents per square foot. The leases are done, we're just waiting, again, for Corporation Counsel to do our final approval on them and then we'll start moving forward on the three that will expire in 2016. That will generate, I should have predicted that, I'm sorry, but that will generate some more revenue for us because of the, of the new lease rate. With, with that being said, the FAA is asking that we have a, we have a mixed plan, I guess you'd say, in the industrial park where there's aviation use and non-aviation use. So, the FAA has required from us is that we, that we create a non-aviation revenue generating lease for the non-aviation, the separate rate for them, and then the, then the aeronautical use rates for the aeronautical use. So, this, this plan bill will put us back in compliance with the FAA, which has been a challenge. Marketing and rebranding, there again, you know, that's going to be an ongoing effort. I've been working with the EDA quite cre, quite closely with Bruce Seymour, and I guess one of the goals or one of the questions that I have and for myself is that, as you grow the county, as you grow the county here, this board, is every aircraft or every business that's coming into the county for business that has a flight center, a flight aircraft, are they flying in here, are they bringing their corporate airplane in here or because they know about us, they don't know about us, or are they landing in another airport and coming in via car? So, that's one of the things that are going to be my goal for the next year is to try to address with the EDA, the people that are coming in here to the county for business to make sure that they understand that, that we also have the airport and that we can now provide them the service that they need. But that's one of my big questions as far as marketing is, is if they're landing at a different airport and driving into the county to conduct business in the county. So, that's going to be one of my, one of my main goals for 2016 to, to market with the Capital improvement projects, these are mandated by the FAA and the Office of Aeronautics. This is much like a, the capital improvement plan that you use as a, as a planning tool also. These are not set in stone, but these are their, their planning tool. So, for 2016, it'll be the taxiway K and P of the industrial park, which we did taxiway J last year, so we'll finish the industrial park. 2017, it'll be the runway lighting and the design only, the vault relocation. 2018 will be the actual runway 422 rehab, which is our last runway. 2019 will be both taxiways, design only, 2020 will be both taxiways, complete rehabilitation. There again, that's not set in stone, but that's their planning tool for, for their end. For the new commissioners, I kind of just wanted to touch real lightly on what my roles and responsibilities are, or my position at the airport. I am basically, my principal liaison for MDOT, State of Michigan, Office of Aeronautics. I ensure that all the compliances, all the aspects that are pertaining to the FAA and the Office of Aeronautics, safety rules and their rules and regulations. I oversee and administrate the daily operations of the airport, oversee and administration of the FBO operations, administration control over the industrial park and to keep it remaining in compliance, which we just got there. The Land Use and Tall Structure Act, hazardous, you know, DNR, wildlife control, customs and border protection, port of entry issues and that manner. That's just a little light, general overview of what my position is at the airport for you. So, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Kathy at all? Bill?
I'd add to Kathy, are we currently on a 95.5, Austin Cherry, 90 federal, five state, five?
Yes.
There was a time when we were on 2.5.
We were 2.5, it was that-
Where did it come from, the feds? Did they drop from 95 to 90?
Probably five years ago.
Okay. And my other question is, do we now provide the amenities needed for pilots coming in there? Do they have a place to lounge? Do they have access to rental cars, catering, anything that they need as they come in?
Well, as you know, we, we partially remodeled the FBO hangar, so it is, it's making, it's, it's making its, it's doing, it's for due for right now, but I think as we grow older, and Bill and I have talked about, you know, we may be to the position in the next couple of years that we really do need to look at a terminal or maybe renovations to, to the hangar itself. But yes, it's, it needs to be addressed, but for right now, we're, we're providing what, what needs to be done.
Do you ever have a meeting out there where corporate people fly in, they meet right there at the airport-
They've been using-
And then they fly back out and the people from the area meet them at the airport?
Yep. We've been, they've been using the Yellow Training Center next to the EOC for that. Yep, so it's working out. But yeah, rental cars and everything, we're, we're all set on that, that-
Is there anything else we need to add out there for?
I think, and Bill and I have talked about it, I do think that as we grow, the more corporate traffic we do, we may have to either, you know, do some renovations in the, in the hangar that, the FBO hangar, so that there is more room, because at this time, you know, there's enough room for two or three pilots to sit in there, but if you get two, two separate jets like we just, like I just told you, we did today, you know, two of them are standing in the, in the hangar and the other two are sitting in the lobby. So, you know, a little bit of renovations in the, in the mezzanine or something like that may temporarily get us where we're at and satisfy us for the next couple, two, three years. But as we grow, we may have to adjust the idea of, of a terminal building.
I would hate to think of losing business because we didn't have something to offer that they needed.
Right. There again, we have the Yellow, the Yellow Training Center that they can sit in too, so, until we get a flight school in there.
An airport's a lot better place than it was 12 years ago, I can assure you that, you know, and we've been, made a lot of improvements, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Going to move on, the 2017 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Program application budget.
I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2017 Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Application, the amount of $218,094.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, the amended agreement Professional Counseling Center Parent Education Group with DHS.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the amended agreement with the Professional Counseling Center for the Department of Health and Human Services for parent education group services in the amount of $4,849.12.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item E, the amended agreement with the Professional Counseling Center for the supportive visitation with the DHS.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the amended agreement with Professional Counseling Center for supportive visitation services for the Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $12,242.99.
Report. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item F, the AT&amp;T Long Distance Agreement with the Health Department.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve for the Health Department the AT&amp;T Long Distance Agreement for a term of 36 months in the amount of $28,476.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item G, the Child Care Fund Budget Amendment with DHS.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Child Care Fund Budget Amendment for the Department of Health and Human Services.
Support. Support. Discussion. Roll call. Maybe that one just, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Coast-to-Coast Prescription Discount Program, item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Coast-to-Coast Prescription Discount Program.
Second. Just one comment I'd like to make about this. I know Oakland County did, and Jackie, this may be something you want to pick up on too. It's a new initiative that the county's starting for a discount program. Like you said, you can do a little bit of work. Oakland County has it in place and I think Dr. Merkenton put it together and stuff too, so it's, it's something good for the residents, big time. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item I, the 2016 Port Security Grant with the Dive Team.
Chairman Bohm, I move to approve the 2016 Port Security Grant Program Application for the Dive Team in the amount of $150,000.
Report. Discussion.
I just want, this is a 25% local match agreement, our cost is $37,000.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
2016 Port Security Grant Request for Emergency Management.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 2016 Port Security Grant Request for Emergency Management in the amount of $741,200.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item K, the Resolution 1613 Bell River Property Acquisition Grant Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution 1613, accepting the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for the purchase of 29, 25.99 acres along the Bell River in Columbus Township.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Resolution 16-14, the Pine River Property Acquisition Grant Contract.
Chairman Bohm, I would move to adopt Resolution 1614, accepting the agreement with the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund for the purchase of 38.79 acres located along the Pine River in Wales Township.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item M, the 2016 Budget Adjustments.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the 2016 Budget Adjustments, Adjustments as presented.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item N, Employment Agreed, Agreement for Annette Merkenton.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the employment agreement with Annette Merkenton, MD, MPH, for health officer, medical director, as presented for a term of 7/1/16 through 6/30/19.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The Health Department Manning Table, the new position.
Chairman Bohm, I'd move to approve the revision to the Health Department Manning Table, adding a .6 FTE social worker position with an analysis being completed after, after six months.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. The Library Replacement Boiler Project.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the Library Boiler Project and award the project to Storage Mechanical LLC in the amount not to exceed $93,304.
Support. Discussion. Bill?
I just, I, I find it interesting every time we get five or six different vendors to bid on some of these projects, that the difference, you know, the low bid is 84,000 and the high bid's 140, you wonder what you're getting for 140 that you're not getting for 84,000. Just kind of thought, I'm sure, and that it's coming out, I'm thinking, but it's coming out loud right now. That's it.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item Q, Resolution 16-15, the Federal Surplus Program Approval.
This time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 16-15, approving the federal surplus program.
Report. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item R, the Chemical Bank 457 Retirement Plan Administrative Services Agreement.
I would move to adopt Resolution 1618, amending the 457 deferred compensation plan and approving the 457B Retirement Plan Administrative Services Agreement with Chemical Bank as presented.
Support. Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item S, the amended brownfield plan in Onwater Street.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt Resolution 1612, approving the amended brownfield plan for the Inn on Water Street.
Support. Mr. Greitop?
Yeah, the only thing I really want to point out here is this has been a very long and arduous process. If you'll, if the chairman, I mean, the commissioners would look at the second page of this report in front of you, there's a completed table, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 things have been checked off, there is one more to do, and that, we're going to check that one tonight at our meeting by approving this, and they will be free to tear down the old building, break ground, and get this new hotel started that we've been working on for, what, Chairman, maybe a year and a half?
Oh, probably, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, we're very, very excited about Marine City and what this is going to do for the town.
Yeah, just a little ironically, many of you know that the St. Clair Inn's under new ownership and you've got the opportunity to meet him, I've been working pretty closely with him and stuff and it's, you know, when we did the Thomas, or the Convention Center project along with the hotel, actually doing this now has ironically been extremely helpful because all the, a lot of the tools and things that we've used on those different projects is now in play for hence the St. Clair Inn, so, I'm not going to say we're experts, but there's, it's kind of the third thing that's come along, very similar, so, like anything, you know how to maneuver these things a lot better just by, you know, learning through these other projects, so.
Just a comment about the artist's rendering of the-
That's top secret stuff, Howard, don't be spilling the beans, okay? Not yet.
It's supposed to be locked in Chemical Bank's safe.
Your money is safe.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tommyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item T, which would be the Resolution 1616, reaffirming the roles and responsibilities under administration controller form of government.
Mr. Chairman, as chair of our selection committee, I would like to move, our administrator selection committee, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 1616, which reaffirms[1654.83]
Item T, which would be the Resolution 1616, reaffirming the roles and responsibilities under administration controller form of government.
Mr. Chairman, as Chair of our selection committee, I would like to move, our administrator selection committee, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution 1616, which reaffirms the roles and responsibilities under the administrator controller form of government, and also approves the administrator controller job description.
Support?
Discussion? I would just like to give Commissioner Tommy and a lot of thank you for assisting in this. Carl, as many of you know, has been in administration, city government, a long time, and to be quite honest, a lot of the things that, you know, he is able to point out when you're going through these contracts, why you need to make tweaks for these types of reasons, I personally have never picked up on them or whatever, even known about them, and, you know, Carl, through his outside work with the Michigan Municipal League and some of these other things, has, you know, he's, he's the most experienced guy we have in the county. We're fortunate to have Carl, you know, sitting on this board to be able to assist with those things, so thanks for your, thanks for your hard work on it, big time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call?
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes. Item C, the Employment Agreement for Kerry Hepting Administrator Controller.
Well, when I do this, and I'm very happy to do, move this motion forward, very happy to do this, but once this is done, does Bill have to vacate his seat?
I'm thinking next Thursday.
This time I'd like to approve the employment agreement with Kerry Hepting as the administrator controller.
Support?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item R, U, the Resolution 16-19, ratifying the collective bargaining agreement for the District Court.
Chairman, at this time I would move that we adopt Resolution 1619, ratifying collective bargaining, ratifying collective bargaining agreement, District Court employees, ASME, 1518.
Support?
Okay. Questions? Roll call?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I regress just a second?
Yep, absolutely.
On that resolution, is that the last bargaining one that we have to complete? Is this the one that's been hanging out there for a long time, and they finally came around? Or we came around? Somebody came around? And mediation worked? Very good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. The Administrator's Final Report.
I will make this quick. First, a reminder, Commissioner McConnell reminded you of the Emergency Management Breakfast. It is at 7:30 tomorrow morning up at the Convention Center. The program starts at 8 o'clock. Next, the office, offices for SMG up at the Blue Water Convention Center, there was some concern that the offices be done by the end of the month, and I can report to you that as long as there's nothing unusual that we find, which we shouldn't, it will be completed, the construction will be completed by the end of the month, so I certainly want to thank Jenny for overseeing this project, and she will be giving you a report, Kerry will be giving you a report next month on how the final numbers turned out. I want to take a moment to thank the Board for demonstrating their faith in me, first of all, and giving me this opportunity to really pursue some of my professional goals, which, you know, as a planner, you talk about projects for years and years, and quite often you're not allowed to actually see a project through, and you've given me that opportunity, and I certainly appreciate that. I want to thank the organization as a whole, it has provided me with what I think is a fantastic career. I've certainly enjoyed my time here, I feel I've accomplished a lot of things that you set out to do when you're much younger, and have some dreams and aspirations, and certainly are very naive in your twenties, but I think the organization has really given me the opportunity to accomplish many of those things, and I, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank all of the employees of this organization for their friendship, their advice, and certainly for their hard work over the years. You've got some fantastic employees in the organization, some wonderful department heads, and I hope everybody in the community, as well as the Board, appreciates the talent that you've got here. I'm going to thank the community for the support they've shown the last couple of years, you know, this, this Board experienced some tough times over the last five or six years, not just financially, but many of the decisions that you had to make. We had some pretty interesting meetings over the years, but you were willing to take those challenges on, straight on, and I think the community is beginning to realize that those decisions were very wise, and I certainly appreciate the support that you provided myself in seeing those projects through as well, knowing that you are there, you believe in what we're attempting to do, what the community has set out to do, that just makes some of those projects so much easier to undertake, and it provides the support within the community, the community leadership, and the general public. They see you standing out front, championing some of these causes, and it certainly makes it easy for all of them to get behind it and support it as well. So, I want to thank the community for stepping forward when it was necessary, and supporting the Board and the county as an organization. I want to thank my administrative staff here, the entire suite. When I came in, I really didn't know a lot about the organization as a whole, although in the Planning Department, you touched many departments, there's a lot of detail that you don't know about, how certain operations function, and who to talk to, and who to be careful when you, when you do talk with them, and the administrative staff within the suite did a fantastic job of coaching me through as I began the transition into this position. I want to thank, in particular, Lydia, for all she has done the last couple of years, Chris Morris, Jenny Posey, and Kerry Hepting as well, and I certainly want to support, or pardon me, thank Kath Witten. Thank you, my wife, and my entire family for the support they've given me. The job has taken a lot of time away from the family, they've supported me throughout, been very patient, and I appreciate it. Thank you all very much for everything you've done for me.
Thank you.
I'd be, I'd be.
We'll be, the Administrator's Report.
I'd be remiss, I'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything here, no. Sean's leaving at the time, John tells myself, hey, I'm going to be going, and, you know, then we got to go and find a new administrator at the time, and talked to Commissioner Samasco about it, made some phone calls, and truthfully, it was an easy choice because everybody said Bill Kaufman. I mean, there wasn't one person I didn't call that didn't say Bill, so really, from what we just went through with the three candidates to, you know, where we were at previous, it was about a 15-second job interview, essentially you want the job or don't, you know, go think about it, and it's really kind of how that thing happened, and I can tell you at the time, being a Commissioner, stepping up, being Board Chairman, new administrator, you know, there was obviously a lot, a lot of eyes on us, and I, and I've told you guys a story probably, and I'll, I'm going to tell it again, Pete Deegan, I got a chance to sit down with him, and maybe three years ago or so, and Pete's been around this organization forever, you know, and you know how Pete talks, real soft spoken, and we're at Casey's, and he says, "Well, to be quite honest, when I heard you were going to be the Board Chairman, and Bill Kaufman was going to be the Administrator, I didn't have a lot of faith in you." I'm like, "Thanks a lot, Pete." And but he went on to say that you and Bill have been the best team, and there again, when we say team, boards, support, administration, he couldn't say enough good things about the team, and it is a team, because as you well know, I can dream this stuff up, you know, all day long, but somebody's got to execute it in the end, so I mean, for every, for every bad idea come up that I come up with and tell Bill to execute it, he's been able to, you know, execute and stuff, and just the Board, you know, this whole support, and I really, if you think, if you look at where the county's at today, and how we're positioned, and we're essentially viewed in the community versus being 12 years ago, Howard, when we first got on the Board, Day 13, jail stuff dropped on our lap, and those are, those are bad days to be in the Commission, man, I mean, it was, it was not a good time, it was a tough time to be on this Board back then, and where we're at today, and, you know, everything, so Bill, and you know, you've been, you've been, you've been awesome. I talked to you twice, had to talk to you more than I talked to my wife, to be quite honest, but, Mr. Greatop, thank you, thank you.
I, I concur completely with everything that Jeff just said. I've been around for all of the time that Bill Kaufman has been here, and when I first came on the Board five years ago, or five and a half years ago, whatever it was, I had all these illusions and these thoughts about how difficult this was going to be, and I heard about the fighting and the pounding and the throwing of pins and everything that that happened at this table over a period of time, and with Bill's leadership and with Kerry's support in the financial thing, it has been a very, very smooth movement for the last five, six years, and I, I think it allowed us as Board members to concentrate more on the things that we really needed to do. When administration took some of that weight away from us, it allowed us to go out and to do some of the other things that we wanted to do. I know I've been able to spend more time in my communities, working on projects in areas like that. Jeff and I have been all over this county doing other things that, that, you know, maybe we wouldn't have time to do if we were sitting here pounding on this table and fart, fart, fight, fighting and arguing over the budgets and, and some of the things that we need to do. So, Bill, I want to thank you for the thanks that you gave us, I got to give it back to you because you have made my job as a Commissioner an absolute pleasure. People ask me how I like my retirement job, and I said, "My 40-hour retirement job is absolutely terrific, I love it, I love it." And I said, "It's, it's a dream, I do not mind going to work whenever I go to work," so, and I owe a big part of that to Bill and part of it to Kerry, and even though Jeff makes it tough, we get through that part of it, so.
Just something real short, thank you very much, Bill, the team that we have here, and all the employees, and everything we do, that, we're working because of you. Thank you very much.
Duke, you're the new guy.
Yeah. Unfortunately, for my own selfish reasons, I hate to see you go, because I didn't get to work with you very long, but the short time I was here, the whole, whole entire organization, completely professional from top to bottom, everything I've seen, and I'm sure that's a lot because of your leadership, Bill, so good luck in retirement, and thank you.
Greg?
You know, you hear, I go to these seminars, and they always talk about, about teams, and, and then they talk, we used to have this little canister, and every time you talked about a staff member that you had, you had to throw a dollar in, because staff is a disease, and team is, is what it's all about, and that's what, that's what it is here. I've only been here a little over a year, or you're, you know, going on a year and a half, I guess, and the team concept is so nice to see, and there isn't a hierarchy, it's just everybody working together, and it doesn't matter what department you talk to, the communication is so well, and I know that starts at the top, and I'm not saying it starts with us, I'm saying it starts from Bill, working his, working it down. For that, thank you. Good luck. I, I've decided that I'm following in your footsteps here pretty soon because this is fun, and it's enjoyable, and you need to spend your 40 hours, so I'm, I'm behind you in about six months, so thank you.
Carl?
Well, I've only, this is only my second term on the Commission, and I had a chance to work with Bill when I was with the City of Port Huron and Elgin Act and other groups, and being a county Commissioner is really a complex administrative job because the organizational chart is so complicated between different appointed department heads and elected department heads, and it's, 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 it's a real struggle to move an organization that's really founded in statutes that were passed in the 1800s and, and keep, keep it current. I agree with everything that's been said. I think one of Bill's strongest traits has been his integrity, and I think that has served us very well, because with all these complex relationships, Bill has been able to build trust across the organization. When Bill contacts employees and administrators and elected officials, it's not always good news, but they know that Bill has integrity, and he wishes to collaborate sincerely with people and move the county ahead, and it's, it's been, of course, to our benefit, but the biggest benefit has been to the citizens of St. Clair County.
Howard?
You mentioned the back in 2004, when you joined the Board, and the bomb that was dropped on us then with the jail, and, and how that was managed, and then we compare that with Bill and how he managed the Convention Center, like night and day. The jail thing, which started in 2003, when I first joined the Board, we didn't have an oversight from Commissioners at all, and it basically was turned over to the Administrator, and he ran the thing right in the ground. Bill had us involved all the time, our, our committee, and we over, you had oversight, and any changes, we discussed them, and then moved forward. But in terms of, of what happened after that, I think was 2008, when we went into, some people say the worst recession since, almost like the Great Depression, and we had to cut the budget by five, six million dollars, I mean, boom, 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 and to be able to orchestrate that and, and continue that over that last four or five years has been phenomenal, and you don't do that unless you get the cooperation of everyone in the organization. And I think Carl had it on, when you've got integrity, and you go to the people, they understand that, you know, this is all about making this whole thing work for everybody in the community, all of our citizens, and that's been, been fantastic, getting all those people to work together. Thank you.
Jay?
So I guess I'll be the quasi-representative of the electeds that are not members of the Board of Commissioners, if I may. When I heard that you were retiring, or you announced to us that you were retiring, I did what a million, a billion people do, I jumped on Facebook and I threw a posting on there. Frankly, if you don't mind, I'm going to read what I wrote. You got a couple hundred likes, by the way, on this one, so. I was informed today that St. Clair County Administrator Bill Kaufman will be retiring this year from his position as the County Administrator. I can't begin to tell you how happy I am for Bill and his family, at the same time disappointed to see him go. He's been a wonderful colleague and friend, his dedication to steering the county properly and thoughtfully through the toughest financial times of our lives at times appeared effortless, although I know that was not the case. It's truly sad to see a government employee that did not operate in the stereotypical government employee manner retire. I believe that his example as an individual that can unite and accomplish without causing turmoil or hard feelings is something we should all strive for. For those of you that do not have the pleasure of knowing Bill, he's exactly the kind of person you would trust your most prized possession with, and you should be glad that he, that we have had him. Bill, thank you for being a friend, a mentor, and a great public servant. Enjoy every minute of your retirement, you've well deserved it. Myself and the people of St. Clair County say thank you, and we'll miss your contributions to the process.
Can you read the ones where he cut your budget, or is it the?
There's a couple comments, I just know them.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. Miss Laney's Business Nun, number 14, receive and file.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to receive and file packets that were sent to Commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.